Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
The April 26th meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board is called to order at 7:32. We have the notices, please.
Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Number three, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Sudge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Okay, roll call. Committeeman Ray is excused this evening. Committeeman Verlezza is currently absent. Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a call.
All right, moving on. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of the March 22 meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you have, we have adopted your minutes. Next is a resolution for elite properties which we saw for the first time at the last meeting, and we ask Commander to go back and fix some stuff. Med, are you there?
I certainly am.
Okay. Would you please help us by pointing out where in this latest version you have made changes since the last time?
Sure, it's just condition number 20 on page 15. And you'll notice that before it had just given the applicant a certain period of time, but we modified it to provide that if you skip down to the 1, 2, 3, 4. Six line, within 12 months of the date of approval by the New Jersey American Wooder of the applicant's requested treatment works approval permit. So, the time will start from that point, not now.
Now, what is the last three lines? What is the significance of the last three lines, starting with except, comma?
Oh, that's if there's a site plan approval or any sort of variance application, of course...
Amanda, come on, you're gonna have to talk very slowly because the acoustics on the connection are not so good.
Okay. That means that if there's any litigation in the interim, then the appeal period is told. So, that would just give them, the applicant, more time, the length of the period of time that it was under litigation, so that they're not outlawed that time. I think it's very unlikely, in this case.
Does anyone have any question about that provision? Does everyone understand that provision? Oh, Theresa, I know you, you shaking your head so violently. Of course you understand. What about the rest of these people?
I wasn't violent.
Okay. In that case, are we ready to adopt this resolution?
My only point, and I'm still not sure if I'm happy with it, is number five, page 13.
Number five on page 13.
Actually, the page 16, 14, top of there. It says, "If the equipment cannot be located in a conforming location, applicants shall ensure that said equipment is appropriately screened from view."
You brought this up at the last meeting.
I think I did.
Yes, you did.
I think I did.
You have a good memory.
I remember these things. So, my only concern or question, comment is, is that strong enough, bearing in mind, is a conforming location right on the neighbor's property, albeit conforming? Is it in the spirit of what was discussed? I don't know what the conforming locations are, but it's just my...
Conforming location would be something that's not inside the setback.
Right. But on the side where the neighbor is, as opposed to other locations away from that neighbor's property.
You're talking about where, I think, is the generator?
Yeah, the generator is, was located on the drawings to the east of the building, which puts it very close to the next door driveway.
Yeah.
But that's, it's not, it's, it's not in the setback, right?
Well, presumably, yeah, can't be in the setback, as Tony mentioned, yes.
Right. Because they didn't seek a variance to that.
No, they wouldn't be like that. But it's just, if you had a choice of there versus another side, is it there for convenience or just because it is?
You may recall that at the first hearing last year, the neighbor was represented by council, who asked a ton of questions, more than a ton. And at the hearing we had earlier this year, I was surprised that the neighbor and council were not even present at the hearing. So, I'm assuming that they did not want to pursue any objection.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe the council is representing the gentleman that lived right next door, far off the lot, but he's the individual who, or the resident that was concerned about having any of those HVAC or generators or any of those components to the east of the, on the east end of the lot. I would prefer to see it on the south end of the lot, because that is now behind the building and closer to the river, so that should, any noise coming from there should not impact that resident.
Yeah.
Would it make sense for me to change that condition to say cannot be located in a conforming location on the south end of the lot? But then, the only alternative is screening. I don't know if that's the ideal.
But it's just away from the eastern property.
That's a very thin boundary. The boundary to building is very skinny, and he, and that resident is very, his driveway goes right down the perimeter on that eastern boundary.
And it'd be cool what's west of the property. I don't know if that's commercial or not.
I think it's commercial.
Yeah, yeah. So, it prefers to be on the commercial side and the residential side?
I think the auto mechanic lays it right there, right? Yeah.
Can we do something like that? Just put it in, yeah. Again, if there's a choice of conforming locations, could we just keep it away from the residential side, if that's an option, versus any other side?
It's an east boundary, off limits.
Yeah, so either south or west.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll change the first sentence. And we'll say the applicant shall work with the township engineering and construction department to locate any ground mounted HVAC equipment in a conforming location furthest from the adjacent residential neighbor.
Yeah, could you mind repeating that again, just a bit more slowly?
Hang on, I'm just gonna write that down.
Sounded good.
The applicant shall work with the township engineering and construction department to locate any ground mounted HVAC equipment in a conforming location furthest from the most adjacent neighbor, residential neighbor.
The only thing that stops me is it limits it only to HVAC system. It doesn't count, take into consideration a generator. Is there a more generic word that keeps any kind of electrical component or anything, HVAC generator, anything along those lines that would keep it off that eastern boundary?
Maybe if we just say any ground mounted equipment, that's anything on the ground.
Okay, thank you. If that's okay with everybody, please. Thank you.
So, is it your intention to strike the word HVAC in paragraph five and let it go with that?
That's exactly what I did. Yes.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Thank you for that.
In that case, we will need a motion to adopt this resolution as dated 4/8/22 with the change on page 13 at number five of deleting the abbreviation HVAC in the bottom line.
Correct.
Can I have that motion?
One second. And include in the eastern property or some residential property, you have those additional words, right?
Correct. Furthest from the nearest residential neighbor.
Right, okay. Is that okay, Dennis?
Okay.
Furthest from the residential neighbor, or something like that.
Well, I mean, the zoning is what it is. If the next lot is residential, I mean, there's no need to overkill.
But so, if it could be on, as opposed, if it could be the south side, west side, let's go with...
And remember, the exact next lot is a flag lot, so you're talking about whether or not this is located next to a driveway.
It is. It is. It is, that building and that resident, they are adjacent to each other.
Yeah, they're right, right, we was close. So, is that good then, Amanda, the driveway, that's residential?
Then do you want me to say furthest from the nearest residential, i.e., preferably on the southeast side?
I don't want the word east in there.
Okay.
On the southern side of the lot. And it's no, no ground mounted equipment on the eastern boundary.
No, I think we went through this during the hearing. I don't, I think this is a rather dramatic change at this late date.
But he didn't move it. But the developer made no indication that he was moving it. So, I think the consensus is no...
Did we vote in, did we vote at the time in February that we wanted to move this equipment to the southern side? And did the here, did the applicant have a chance to comment? I mean, I hate to bring up new business at this late date.
Well, maybe, Amanda, you can just talk to the attorneys and figure it out, what's the most palatable, realistic wording to use.
I could work with him and just say, this is the board's intent, and then we can come up with some language that delivers that intent.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, don't make it difficult, that's not the intent. It's just, you know, what is it, if there's an opportunity to locate it?
If you put something in here that the applicant didn't agree to, then you're opening yourself up to another hearing, which I don't think anybody wants.
Thank you, Ellen.
Yeah, I'll definitely run it by the other attorney, just to make sure whatever it says is fine with him.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Sure, sure.
Sorry, Dennis, that stops, delays this, but I think it's a good discussion.
Are we ready for the motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, please.
And as a matter of general business, all present are eligible except for Mr. Jones, to vote on the resolution.
Correct, and my position still stands.
Correct. Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Committeeman Verlezza?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
The resolution is memorialized as amended.
Okay.
And I will send the copy of the revised version, after I talk to the attorney.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, is our board attorney, Ms. Wolf, excused now from the rest of the meeting?
Say that again.
Our board attorney is excused now from the rest of the meeting?
Oh, I hope so. And thanks again for traveling all this distance to your telephone.
So far. Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Thanks, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, you want to take, take on the schedule?
You want me to take on the schedule? Sure.
That's next on the agenda.
It is? Oh, I thought we, oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, somebody reads the agenda.
That's right, okay. So, on our next meeting in, that's two weeks, right?
Two, two weeks.
Yes.
May 10.
May 10th, we have a subdivision for Old Forge Road, 57 Old Forge Road, that I will send out to the board member shortly.
Do we have the professional reports?
Not yet.
When will...
Friday.
Say again?
Friday.
Friday. So, we'll have them for more than a week?
Yes.
And are we sure that the notice will be published?
We're never sure if the notice will be published until the notice is published. We're never 100% sure. The best I do is remind the attorneys and then...
Well, we gotta, we gotta get this under control.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, it's really, they publish, and then unfortunately, if something happens last minute, that's really out of our control. So, from my, from my understanding, the notice will be published.
Let me talk to the other board members for a minute. Here's the dilemma. If an applicant fails to publish, and this has happened to us on two applications within the past year, then we can't hold the hearing. And then, at the last minute, we are stuck either canceling the meeting or having a short meeting because there is no scheduled hearing. And the next guy in line for a hearing can't be pulled up because he doesn't have the opportunity to publish. So, my concern here is that the board has to find a way to make the applicants come to these meetings just like we do when they're scheduled. And I will entertain any thoughts that any of you might have.
Well, I think that, and one easy way is they go to the bottom of the list. I mean, that they lose their place in line and...
But that, that doesn't help us with a meeting, what if we had a meeting and no one came?
Well, Mr. Chair...
I mean, we've got a schedule, and we've got, and we're balancing a number of applications, and here we are stuck with, unable to have a hearing tonight, for example.
So, I agree with Mr. Richardson, that, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Richardson, if there, if an applicant is not prepared, or fails to do something, or falls short on something, they go to the end of the queue. We, as a board, have work that needs to get done, which is planning board work, which is master plan, that we have plenty of work to talk about. And I think we need to focus on that as well as the applicants that are being brought before us.
But you have to be careful of the, of the, of the timing on that, too. The clock starts at a certain time, and we've got to hear an application. We can't arbitrarily send them to the, to the back of the line, you know?
Well, there are timing issues.
Yeah, there are, exactly.
And the...
And you're bound to hear an application, you know? So, by pushing them out beyond a certain time, you can wind up with a...
Listen up.
With an illegal situation.
So, Mr. File, if they, if the applicant fails to do something which impacts their clock, does that not reset the clock?
No.
No.
It does not. So, it's still stuck in that window.
All we can do is dismiss, and we could dismiss with prejudice.
That's a tall...
If they did it twice, you could do that, certainly.
You don't want to, you don't want to take, go down that road, that you get sued.
I mean, generally, the applicant is going to be willing to, you know, if it's an issue on the applicant's side, generally, nine out of 10 times it is, is they're going to file, you know, they're going to allow us the extension.
So, how close to the deadlines do they get? Just go through the timeline here, but when do, if there's an example?
So, the majority of the applications is, there's a 45-day process for completeness.
Right.
And then, there's generally, most applications we see have some sort of variance included, which gives 120 days to schedule it. And we've been maintaining well under that.
They've got five and a half months.
So, when do we get...
Unless it's a larger application, like, you know, the Delaware Avenue subdivision or Elite, if they have issues, then the applicants automatically grant extensions.
So, what, what time before their scheduled appearance does it cause an inconvenience? How many are we talking about? A week, 10 days, two weeks?
Uh, two weeks. And usually, we find out within seven to 10 days.
Seven to 10 days.
And then, it's too late for somebody else to publish.
Because they've got to do the two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the, the issue with tonight's hearing is that this is the second time that they've missed a date by failing to notice, and their 120-day clock runs out at the end of the week. So, they've got to refile with a, with a new, and start the clock over again.
No, they don't, they haven't withdrawn unless the board decides to dismiss the application, then they would have to refile.
Well, they, if they don't restart the clock before the end of the week, or if they don't file for an extension before the end of the week, what happens?
Then the board, then I would bring it to the board's attention at the next meeting, that, that no extension was granted, and the board would have to withdraw, would dismiss the application.
Okay, thank you. We're going to continue to pursue this with council. It's a, it's a slippery slope on both sides, but we would like to schedule meetings and deal with the schedule matter.
I think it also would be in our best interest to understand what tools we have as a board to work against applicants who, for whatever reason, aren't meeting their requirements. And I don't think that's, for me, it's not clear what those tools are.
Now, we have...
Liz, is this an issue anywhere?
No, one thing I, one of my other communities actually is part of the completeness process. They have to submit a draft notice, knowing that they're not going to actually submit it to the newspaper, but it's for review. At the time, they're not deemed complete. So, I mean, that's one thing that you might think about doing.
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Part of the problem there is that as we go through the steps of completion and reviewing this, getting ready for the hearing, we may find that our original thought about, or the applicant's original thought about what sorts of relief he needs may change, which changes the extent of the notice. We had one of those last year where, where we had to postpone because a new variance came up, and it wasn't in the published notice.
Most notices have a catch-all, though, you know, that anything that comes up in the course of the proceedings, you know, they notice for, sort of the catch-all.
It's basically, and anything, any other variances, the board deems.
You know, I think, if I'm remembering correctly, it was perhaps last year, it was because it was a significant, it was a D, no, this was not the right same, right board. It did happen with the D variance for the zoning board, where I think they had to come back and re-notice.
All right. Now, we do have an opportunity next month that rarely comes along, and that is that there is a fifth Tuesday, December 31.
May 31.
December 31.
I'm sorry, May, May 31. How did I get to New Year's already? May 31 is a Tuesday.
But it's the day after Memorial Day.
It's the day after Memorial Day, I will concede.
The answer's no.
But depending on...
To whatever you're gonna ask.
Depending on how the schedule shapes up in the next two weeks, in terms of applications and master plan activity, we may...
Sorry, Dennis.
We may want to take advantage of the opportunity to hold a special meeting on May 31 to, to get back on schedule, so, by, by dealing with the applications or the extensions of applications, or the hearing that we've got next week. We've still got Parisi hanging out there, waiting for the DEP. We've got the master plan schedule coming up near the end of May. So, at the next meeting, we will consider the schedule, and I may ask you to approve a meeting on the 31st. That would be three weeks later, that's adequate interval, is it not? We don't have to do that tonight, we can do that on May 10.
No, we can, no, I would have to have it done by the 10th, so I could put a notice in, yes.
Okay.
The next meeting on the 10th. Our, our meeting on the 24th of May, I, per the chairman's permission, we offered it to G2 Development, which is the Gates Avenue subdivision, that was supposed to be on for tonight, but we've not heard a confirmation from the applicant yet.
What is that one?
G2 Development.
Yes, I know. I spoke with council about that.
Gates Avenue subdivision.
That's a month from now. I'm hoping that they, we can get the notice in in time this time. Okay, so much for, do you have anything else on schedule?
No, that's it.
In that case, let us move on to committee reports, and we'll start with master plan. What do you have to say?
Okay, so, the master plan committee has been busy working on land use element recommendations that tie back to land use element goals and objectives that were established earlier this year. Our plan is to have draft recommendations out at least a day or two, if not sooner, before May 24th, in which that will be really when we will present, the first opportunity to present recommendations for the land use element.
It is my intention, with at least three applications stacked up, is my intention that, starting in May, we allot two hours of the meeting for the hearing and one hour for master plan, because the amount of input you're going to shovel at us for the master plan will be so extensive that I don't think we can digest three hours' worth and then continue another three hours' worth at the next meeting. So, I'd like to stretch it out to one hour per meeting, starting in May and extending on through the summer at that rate. That gives you a little more chance to recycle and allows you to manage the presentation in smaller bites.
That's fine.
Now, I know that the township...
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah?
I know that the township committee is very concerned about master plan. If you listen to the video... If you listen to the video of the meeting last Monday, the budget meeting last Monday, and the township committee meeting last Wednesday, make that two weeks ago, you'll find that 50, five zero minutes of the five hours of meetings, that is to say, one-sixth of the meeting, was spent discussing the master plan, which is kind of interesting because the inputs were random, the opinions were random, and there was no one there to represent the planning board or the master plan committee. But I would urge you, it was actually quite faithfully reported on the front page of the Echos. So, we need to get this thing up on a higher level of visibility, and we need to be more in touch with the township committee from a budget point of view. Now, I suspect that the budget is going to be adopted tomorrow night.
No.
Now, it may be too late. We may, we may be locked into some numbers, and we may have to deal with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, the budget is, it's the first reading tomorrow night. It's not going to be adopted tomorrow night.
Whatever.
Yeah.
They never change it in between, you know that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, did you request any budget for...
Yes, for task two. We, we got a budget for task one, and we're, we have a budget now, we're developing for task two, which is the recommendations for the master plan.
Okay. And this is, and this is paying the professionals?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Professional.
Professional, okay.
Assuming, assuming that we have the Old Forge hearing next, at the next meeting, that is to say, the May 10th, I would dearly love to spend one hour of that meeting on master plan issues, just to get this thing rolling. If you can call out one discussion that we can have...
I would prefer not to piecemeal this, we've...
I would prefer that you find a way to do it.
Okay. That's your opinion.
It's now, we're now one-third of the way through the year.
Mr. Chairman, in all deference, we've laid out a schedule, we've published that schedule, we've talked in terms of the phased approach to this. I think it's much, you have four members of this board that are dutifully working on it and have been empowered to pull together recommendations to present back to the larger board. Let's let that process play out. We've got this under control.
I understand that you think you have it under control, but we've only seen one presentation in four months.
Not think, Dennis.
Yeah, we know we have it under control.
And, and, and there will be, there will be discussion and disagreement with your recommendations, I'm certain of that, there always is.
And we will, we will accept those...
And I'd be surprised if there weren't at least nine different versions of what...
We will, we will accept all comments, starting on the 24th, and we'll move through this process as efficiently as possible. this process as efficiently as possible. So, but I'm not going to allow piecemeal. This is where we've gotten into trouble before of presenting half-baked things that then don't comport with a consensus even amongst the master plan committee.
You will have, you will have an hour of recommendations ready for the meeting on the 24th, if we have a hearing before that.
We could use the entire meeting, but if we're given an hour, that's all, we'll take an hour.
And then we'll see what transpires for the 31st. That may be a full master plan or it may be split with, depending on how the application's scheduled.
Why don't you take a show of hands now on how many people are interested in meeting the Memorial Day?
Yeah, I know I will not be available.
I will not be available either.
I will not be available.
You're not gonna have a quorum. Don't even bother.
Well, I'm reminded that on the, at the end of 2020, we had about four special meetings trying to get resolved, to resolve the master plan issues that we're having at the end of the year.
First holiday of the summer. Sorry. It's a terrible timing.
So.
Well.
You, you have a complete plan and milestones for your, getting this delivered on time?
We presented it back in February, if you recall, a full laid-out schedule.
So, you'll know.
We're on track. I'll tell you when we're not on track and when we need to make up time. I mean, the summer will be busy with regards to getting through a lot of the recommendations so that we're ready to draft the final plan early at the end of the year. And we're starting with the toughest element, which is the land use element. So, I think that's a good plan that we've all worked out.
Oh, great. I mean, we all know it's a crucial document. We need to get it completed. And if you say you're, you're on schedule and you have milestones set, then I have every confidence in that you're gonna get it done.
Great. Thank you.
No, and thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
You have my support.
Great. Thank you.
The next committee report, Mr. Jones, do you have anything on Tifa?
I missed something.
I do not. I do not. I do, I do not.
Okay, then let's move on to the ordinance. You've all seen the draft of an ordinance that I would like to send on to the township committee, and assuming you have read the rationale, fourteen points of why we think this is important. Fundamentally, I am concerned about the continuing creation of overlay zones. And we know that after we adopt the car wash redevelopment zone, that inevitably there will be an overlay, and I'd like to get ahead of that. At a meeting last summer, we talked about expanding the list of permitted uses on Valley Road, and I'm sure that that will be in the master plan. But anticipating that, and anticipating that we're gonna have an ordinance inevitably to create an overlay zone, I'm suggesting that we do it in a thoughtful way and expand the list of permitted uses now. And if, if that's agreeable with this board, we'll send this on to the township committee and let them start the process.
Why would you do this ahead of the master plan, when the master plan is a visionary document? Why wouldn't you wait to see what the master plan committee recommends first? Because.
Well, we had that.
That's the framework, that's the framework for an ordinance. You're jumping the gun with this.
No, I'm not jumping the gun, because we had the discussion.
We've never discussed extended stay hotels as being a permitted use or something this board even wants to consider.
I'm sorry, Alan. We did discuss.
No, we didn't. We did not discuss extended stay hotels. We did not get a consensus on whether that is something we wanna see.
We did not agree to it.
I personally do not want to see that.
Tell me, tell me when you're finished interrupting me, Alan, so I can.
You interrupted me. I'm sorry. I had the floor.
We did discuss extended stay hotel back in August. You'll recall, we had a discussion about extending the uses, and we, we took a broad view, I took a broad view in presenting it, and I was talked out of standard apartment houses. But all the other uses that we talked about are, were in that discussion last August. And that was intended to be the beginning of the master plan steering effort to get the board's consensus on what they would be willing to approve in the master plan. So, this is not jumping the gun, and as you're well aware, we've passed ordinances on Valley Road in the past without having the master plan in place.
Where there's a legal reason to do it, maybe, on the affordable housing changes, extended stay, I certainly would never agree to that. We may have discussed it. I'm not debating the discussion points. It's never agreed. It says agreed here. That's not true. So, I'm not sure, if there's legal components in here on affordable housing stuff, possible.
Rest of it. Ms. White. Mr. Chairman, could I just maybe get some input from, request input from our board planner in regards to the issue brought up with regards to the cart before the horse? I mean, could you opine on that? As it relates to our master plan discussions?
Yes, I mean, typically, you would wait for the master plan or you would amend the master plan. You would do maybe an amendment to the land use element to say something has come up, you know, there's an emergent opportunity or something has come up and we would like to change the land use element to recommend the uses that are recommended here. I mean, so if that is something, because eventually, as the board knows, you know, there's first reading at the council, then it comes back to this board for consistency with the master plan. And so, if it's, and, 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 you know, then the board can say it's not consistent, and the council can still, by some majority vote, anyway. But the cleanest way to do it is to either be in the master plan or you amend the master plan to superman it. That is the cleanest way.
You also have to be aware that we have, in the past two years, passed five affordable housing overlay zone ordinances, all of which were not covered in the master plan. And so, and there is now a sixth overlay looming after we did the car wash redevelopment zone. So, I'm just trying to rationalize the, the ordinance process by not creating it. And believe it or not, we will pass the overlay zone if it comes to us, because that'll come to us from the township committee. We've already done that five times.
Is that a redevelopment zone or overlay for a car wash?
Say again?
Is that a car wash? Should that be a redevelopment or an overlay?
That's a redevelopment zone which will lead to an overlay.
But just that one, just for the overlay for the redevelopment zone, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But we've done that, we've done that five times in the past few years.
But that's affordable housing, right?
Say again?
That's affordable housing, right? That's part of fair share, correct?
Four of them were, yes. And the, and this one will be an affordable housing issue because that's the presentation that was made to the township committee. Even though it's not a part of the fair share settlement, it will involve affordable housing. Also, you may recall that the zoning board has approved two variances for use variances where affordable housing was concerned. And so, I'm simply suggesting that if we fix the ordinance and liberalize it, which is the direction I think we're going in, at least that's a, that's the direction that we agreed to go in.
Use it to incorporate.
Last August.
I would, 138.1, we talk about affordable housing. Yeah, that seems to be right for, seems very old language, I guess. So, anything to do with the legal need? Yeah. I mean, is that fair, 138.1?
Yeah, I actually, I provided that language to Dennis. This is something that is sort of standard in fair share housing center settlement agreements. This is like the, the language that they require that all, if you're gonna have a inclusionary development, like a set aside, you know, if you have a hundred apartments and whatever, and you are asking for affordable housing, that they have to meet these requirements.
Yeah, which is typical, this is what we know. I don't know the 13% and the 7%, that seems very old language to me.
Oh, the 13 and the 7, yes, no, but the, what's underlined is.
No, I understand. But I'm just saying, it's very old. So, legally, it just seems very old. So, I could justifiably say that makes sense.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
The current ordinance was written presumably years ago, and Liz has been kind enough to update that for me.
Yes, I think anything that touches upon that type of legal change, we should do sooner than later regardless, perhaps. That's not, that's not a master plan, from my point of consideration. That's a legal consideration, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, I will note, and I'm a little, I don't know your housing element very well, but I know what, you know, the housing element is a part of your master plan. And so, any ordinances that have been adopted pursuant to that housing element are essentially consistent with your master plan.
Yeah, but this is just legal, this is the legal words that we've used all along.
Yes, yes, yes.
In all the stuff. So, it's just standard stuff, whereas what struck out seems like old standard stuff. That's what I'm saying, just update it, yes. It doesn't hurt, it's right?
Yes, I mean, I will say, I will say this. You do not, is part of the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, Long Hill does not have a mandatory set aside, which most municipalities do. I'm not sure why, I, you know, because it's sort of standard language in most settlement agreements, but you don't have this language in your settlement agreement, actually.
Right, no. So, what, so, what's the difference between the two? What struck out?
No, okay, so.
So, you were placing the struck out.
Yeah, okay, so this, this language is consistent with the current state rules for, if you have affordable housing, you have to meet these income requirements, you know, 50 have to be moderate, or whatever, moderate 50 have to be low, 13% of those 50 have to be very low. So, that's all that. That is, that is consistent with what is called UHAC, right? Uniform Housing Affordability Controls. This language, like I said, is, is really just standard language in all settlement agreements, but for whatever reason, it is not in Long Hill's settlement agreement. And I don't.
In the actual agreement itself, we don't have that same language?
It doesn't, your, your settlement agreement doesn't have this language. No.
All, all the applications refer to similar language.
Well, if you are gonna provide affordable housing, you have to do it consistent with this, no matter, no matter what. But it's just, you don't have a mandatory set aside, you know, meaning, for example, we'd, 44 Plainfield, which came before the zoning board, that would, had, has enough units that in most municipalities, that would've kicked in an affordable housing requirement. But you don't have that here. So, there is no.
If we did have this here, because it's more than five, would that, would have helped?
Yes. I mean, if, if you had this, yes, then they would've had to.
And just last question. So, the old stuff of 7% and 30, that has to be, again, that has to be old. That should be, should've been done a long time ago.
Probably. Yes, yeah, that, that is old.
Yes, I, fine. That's legally good reason to do something, in my opinion. The rest of stuff I'd wait to a master plan.
So, Mr. Chair, so, to try and put the horse in front of the cart again, can we take some of the recommendations here and give this to the master plan committee for consideration into the revision work that's being done? Take silence as a yes?
No, I would certainly accept any. I mean, there's some really good work here to set the framework.
Yeah.
So that we at least could get the horse before the cart, so to speak.
Yep.
I think that would be the right way to do it.
And can we do 138.1 separate then?
Anything with affordable housing should be, not an issue for the master plan.
Right. I mean, I wouldn't wanna do anything that would, again, countermand the, the settlement agreement.
Right. Can this stand alone, Liz? 138.1, can that stand alone now as something that could be done and maybe should be done? Or can it wait? If it can wait, fine.
It can wait, but it would be fine to do it now as well.
As one singular thing?
Yeah. But I don't think, like I said, it's not something that is required in your settlement agreement, so you don't necessarily have to do it now.
So, it can wait?
It can wait.
So, I'm, whatever people want to person, I don't mind either way. I would support doing it now, just to do it. Should anything else come up in the meantime, maybe beneficial? And the old language is old.
And, Mr. Hand, that last sentence in there with extended state hotels, I don't think we want that in there.
No, no, I just, all I'm doing is looking at the paragraph itself, the legal paragraph.
Yeah, okay.
I stop after applicable law, after law.
All right.
That's right. Thank you for clarifying. I, I pointed to it, but I didn't say it. Yes, that one paragraph.
All right.
I am sensing that the board does not want to move forward with this.
I think the board had suggested a recommendation.
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
I think the board made a recommendation that we would give it to the master plan committee, and they would use that to.
Well, yes, I know.
And they would use that to, as a consideration as they build out the element.
And 138, and that includes 138.1? Is that a consensus? And if that's consensus, I won't say anymore about it.
If it, if it can wait without damage, just.
I'll hold on to this until the master plan is adopted. Is there any other, other old or new business that we have to consider?
There's no parks coming up there or anything interesting like that?
We do have a park coming up.
Oh. What do we have?
A subdivision.
Oh. Where's that? Not Gates, I'll take it.
Excuse me. I didn't bring it with me.
Oh, it's all right.
I was gonna, no, that's fine. So, I will be emailing that out, excuse me, for the, to do prior to the next meeting.
Anything else in the pipeline?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Oh, wait, well, there's, wait, is there one more subdivision? Did I mention that one? Now, that might be going to the, there's another subdivision, but I don't know if it's going to this board or zoning board.
Nothing further on Delaware Avenue?
Not yet.
Okay.
And, Vic, has there been any update as to the sewer connection and the date when this, we'll have the moratorium lifted?
I think that they have, I think it was five years from the, the date of the sale. Is that correct, Deb?
We're like two years in.
Right, but.
That's what Committee Man Ray stated, was the five years from the date of sale.
So, we're looking at, they have technically three more years.
And if they actually get it built and take the right readings and send those down to the DEP requesting an upgraded license, that's, that licensing process is within the five years or within the three years. And so, if you're working backward from the fall of '25, you gotta allow at least a few months to get the plant relicensed. And then you've got it, working backwards, you've got to build it, and working backwards, you've got to get site plan approval from this board. And the calendar's running, and I'm anxiously waiting to see them come in and say, we have a schedule. But they've got.
Because the commitment is to have completed that process, not to have just sent information down to the state.
Completed.
Right.
I mean, if you look at the applications that we have held for months and months and months, waiting for little wetland determinations for Elite and for Parisi, for example, imagine how long it takes them to approve a sewer capacity.
Or lifting the moratorium.
Especially since it's been going on 22 years since we've had the sewer ban. They probably lost half the records. Anybody have any other business they'd like to bring before the board?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Don't go away.
Thank you.
Pleasurable.
Thanks for your support. Thank you.